We get it passed to the legislature. There was a lot of concern. Business doing a search and little service which they do in small. They decided that Dr. Easter, the dean, first dean, why don't we do this for the apartment?
I'm not gonna touch that one.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, that was a wide open door. Through which if someone could move.
Students can bring practitioners and older kids at the scene.
We'll call a meeting in order, please. First item is roll call.
Molsen.
Here.
Van Kampen.
Here.
Mar.
Here.
Smithback.
Here.
Beno.
Here.
Schnelly.
Here.
Polda.
Here.
And Majeski and Meyer are out tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Move on. The minutes are not prepared for the November 2nd to move on to public appearances. The first item is 4A. In this point, we invite anybody in the audience that wants to bring anything before us. It's either on or off the agenda. No action be taken on it, but we can maybe give you advice. Anybody wants to speak to something other than what's on the agenda? Or if it's on the agenda, sure, come on.
We have a couple registered, so.
So Elise has a couple of images to show.
I'm sure. Okay, that's fine. We need you.
I got a hard copy for everyone.
Yep, I just passed those out, too.
We'll need you to sit down.
Not those ones.
Excuse me. Give us your name and your address, please. Yeah.
Michael Doran. I live at 319 Janzil Street. So, Elise, if you're ready.
Jeff is actually driving, so you can pass him around.
All right, so at your last meeting, I believe Sketchworks presented a proposal for a, what they termed a mixed-use development, but which was largely a high-density residential unit. On the end of Janzil Street, just immediately to the south of Little Buddies. So that's what it was in their sketch, but it didn't really put it in context with the surroundings. So I thought it might be helpful to the commission members just to see that. Could I have the next slide? So if you were, if we're leaving Waterman Park, going down Janzil Street, that's what we currently see. We see Little Buddies there on the left. And further to the south, there are three rental properties, which would be the site for this development. And beyond that, there are a number of single-family owner-occupied homes. Quite a number of them in very good condition and representative of historic bungalow-type architecture in town. Next one, please. And this is what the appearance would be after the project was constructed. And I just thought it would be helpful to see that on the landscape, in the surroundings, and what the impact of it would be to the community and specifically to the neighbors. The next one also, please. And this is what it would look right from the property right across the street. And I draw your attention, south is to the right on the image. And that particular home would be really severely impacted by this structure. Not only would the structure be there, sort of blocking any view from that direction, but there would be a parking lot. All the surface parking would be right there, as you see those cars stuck there. Plus, all the traffic in and out of that parking, as well as the underground parking. As that dips down to go and wrap around the back for underground parking, there would be like a 10-foot drop-off to the left-hand side of that row of Arbivide, as you see. Next slide, please. So I don't believe the density fits the neighborhood, the residential neighborhood, immediately to the south, nor does the architecture really fit with the historic view of the community we're trying to maintain. There's a severe impact on the neighbors. It would be the tallest building in the village, as far as I can see, right next to a single-family residence. Next slide, please. The other thing I'm particularly concerned about is the impact on traffic. It's a busy chart, but you can see North Main coming down from the south, continuing to South Main. You can see CC coming in from the upper left. There are all these traffic movements. It's a very busy part of the community during rush hour. We've got Spring Street, where people are going, dropping the kids off to school. We've got Elm, Washington Union, right there. And right where the proposed project is, you see there is a couple of additional driveways proposed with traffic in each direction. So my only purpose today was to bring this kind of visually into your attention, so you could see how it would sit on the landscape. And you don't get that from the plans that were submitted in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, we have one more. Shelby.
Oh, it's my neighbor.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. My name is Shelby Deacon. Myself and my husband Brennan actually live at that property that was right next to the proposal that you saw on the screen. We're lifelong Oregon residents. We met at Oregon High School, got married, and went to college, and then moved back here. We actually bought that home in March, and that was from Brennan's grandma and grandpa, who had lived there for 60 years. And so this home has a lot of sentimental value to us. So we got word of this proposal, brought to the group on November 2nd, to develop the four-story apartment buildings on the lot directly next to our home. And we have several concerns that we'd like to articulate to your, to your, excuse me, to your group today. So the first one would be, we are concerned about the diminution of the value of our home. Building that complex directly next to us without a buffer between the apartment complex and our home would result in decreased property value, which is very concerning for us, just because financially, it's our first home that we ever bought, and it does mean a lot to us as well. Secondly, we're concerned about nuisance, noise, and privacy at our home. As a result of the four-story complex being built, we would no longer have privacy in our home or yard. So renters living in the building would be able to see directly into our windows, so we would lose privacy, and directly into our yard, even if the project built a fence. Given the height of the building, they'd be able to see into our windows and yard 24/7. According to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities 156, a nuisance exists if there's a condition or activity that unduly interferes with the private use and enjoyment of land or public right. So we'd be contending with traffic, noise, apartment residents seeing in our windows and our yard, and even if that fence was put up, they'd still be able to see. So we're just very concerned about our privacy and then the impact of our property value. Thirdly would be lack of safety. So like Michael mentioned, there would be that 10-foot ledge with that drop-off that's right next to our yard. So if we had kids, that there could be a potential for them falling and getting hurt. There's a lot of car traffic that we'd be worried about. We currently don't have a fenced-in yard, so just physically, we're concerned about safety and car traffic going in and out. Fourth would be construction concerns. It's plausible that with the construction of this large proposal, this large complex, there could be damage to our home in which we incur financial costs as well. And then the complex as proposed doesn't match the historic aesthetic of downtown Oregon, nor does it blend into the residential neighborhood. Another thing that came to mind is the recent Jefferson Street apartments that were built. While this expanded downtown housing availability, they weren't built directly next to single-family homes, so it had less of an impact of those around there, given that there was the railroads right next to it. So I think additional considerations must be made when considering the Janzil Street proposal, given that there is a single-family home, which is our home, right next to the apartment building. We totally understand that there's a need for additional housing in downtown Oregon, and we understand why that location was chosen from an urban density perspective, and since we want to expand downtown Oregon. But as lifelong Oregon residents, we chose to move back into this community because we really care about it, we really love living here, and we just want to know, or want everyone here to know, that this would have a very negative impact on our lives and on our community and neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? That's fine. You don't have to.
Good evening. Tim Higgins, Prairie Grass Road Village of Oregon. I wanted to speak to something that was discussed at a planning commission meeting, I believe it was October. There was a discussion about building a crosswalk on Wolf Street, south of Foxfield, to support the new subdivision in Autumn Woods, is it? I just wanted to share an observation that when I see traffic going up that hill slowly, picking up speed, when they crest that hill, the traffic tends to be really coming aggressively down the hill. And in my opinion, telling kids that that's a safe place to cross the street is not a good thing to do. And I would encourage the planning commission to take another look at that plan and consider if there's another way to get the kids safely across the street.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Thank you. We'll move on to communication, missing business. There's none of that. Unfinished business, none. New business. We have a public hearing and discussion and considered recommendation of village board. Can issues permit to allow for indoor commercial entertainment in the planned business zoning district 787 North Main Street, Suite 105? That up against Bad Art Company. This time we'll open up the public hearing. Staff report.
All right. I'll give a little bit of an intro and then invite Emma up here to add a few things. But Bad Art Company is an existing village business off of Netherwood, right now, I believe. And Emma's looking to expand her business and take over a lease in the Oregon Shopping Plaza on North Main Street, in the former Community of Life church area. So kind of near the auto parts store and Sharkist Dentistry there, Suite 105. Her business includes art studio, gallery, retail space, classes, rental space, and then would have some limited food and beverage offerings. So some refreshments to be able to offer during, you know, paint class or, you know, evening art, you know, craft gathering or whatever that might be. I know she's also been in communication with Joy about some liquor license regulations and haven't brought anything to the board yet, but she's in communication with Joy on kind of what's required there. Will be all inside the building, so not looking for any outdoor fence or anything like that. And I don't believe at this time, you know, live music or anything is proposed, but that would be allowed under the indoor commercial entertainment umbrella. It's largely the food and beverage function that's kind of prompting the conditional use permit. But Emma, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself and then add anything that I missed. I'm sure I missed something, but just interested in learning a little bit more. I think maybe if you could talk through some of the hours of operation and stuff as well.
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Emma. So you covered a lot of it. It would be a community space, not just art classes, but very much an art lounge really explains it. So when we talk about food and beverage, we're not talking about adding another bar to the community, although I would like to have beer, and I would like to have a really great NA cocktail menu. I think that that is something that's really important to provide. Eventually, perhaps include some traditional cocktails, but that's not really a goal for me right now. The space I currently have is cute. It's the lease I inherited from my late mother, and it was her personal art studio. And I've kind of been using it as that, but I really wanted to offer events and classes and ways for people to be creative and be in an open, inclusive, creative environment. So the business is a lot of things at once. The retail section will include, like, traditional art supplies, but also some gifts and local art from local artists. You can see in the lounge space, I do want to have that open daily. So when I'm not hosting classes and events, it would be open and operate much like a coffee shop. So sort of an additional space for people to gather, bring their friends, have a cup of tea and some coffee and maybe snacks. I don't intend to have a commercially used kitchen, so any snacks that I would bring in would be either prepared in a separate commercial kitchen or be ready, ready to go. So that kitchen space is more just for storage on there. Oh, the other part is the rental rooms. They're small. They were previously used as tanning bedrooms. And those would be spaces that people could rent by the hour or day in order to work on art projects or study for college exams or have a one-on-one sit-down with a friend over some tea without being distracted by things. So that would just sort of be extra little space back there, in case we're wondering what that means. Are there any questions right now?
Anybody?
I was wondering what kind of parking space do you need?
Yeah, so it's in the Oregon Plaza, when they recently refinished that parking lot. So it's really hard to say how many people we would have at a certain time. The classes would be probably about 10 to 12 people when they happen, a couple times a week. And then I would hope that I would have 5, 10, 15, if I'm lucky, people hanging out in the lounge. I do kind of envision spaces, oh, Firefly Cafe is closed, so let's go over to Bad Art Co. and, you know, have our coffee there. So probably not more than 20 people in the lounge at a time. So, you know, parking possibly up to 20 cars. But after surveying the parking lot there, it appears, kind of looking at it in the afternoon and at night, it looks like there's ample parking, but hopefully. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I think you've got a nice business plan set.
Thank you.
I think that you have a good product that's going to be welcomed in the community.
Into the microphone.
Hi, how are you? And I think that, I think that it's a good use of the space that sort of mimics something that was there in a different form. I think it's a good project.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
All right.
Public comments. Anybody have anything else to say? Plan Commission? Well, this is quick. We'll close the public hearing. We're going to move on, debate this.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion, possible recommendation of village board for can issues permit as discussed.
So moved.
I guess we're not going to discuss. Anybody?
Second.
We have most of you have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with it. You got to go to the village board yet, but you'll be okay. Thank you. Status of comprehensive plan and comprehensive outdoor recreation plan.
All right, we are nearing the finish line. Thanks to you all for our almost year-long effort bringing this back to home plate. So as you saw in my email a couple weeks ago, I sent out kind of a final draft for some comments. I got a few back from a handful of you, so thank you. The version that's currently on the website is that same version you got right before Thanksgiving, but I did just get a new kind of final, final draft from Sonia this morning. So there was some, all the changes that had been suggested at this point have been incorporated and just didn't have that, you know, up on the website quite yet. But we'll have that at the joint meeting on December 18th with the village board. So I hope you guys have saved the date and are attending. We'll have that right at the top of the agenda, so we'll get you in and out. The majority of the comments, I think, at this stage were, there was a couple things from like the senior center and library about programs they offered in the past that they don't anymore. So just some clarity on that. A couple cleanup items, just rewording things a little bit, but no substantial changes. So just wanted to, I didn't want to include the full plan in the packet again, because I got a hard time about that last time. So just kind of one last final opportunity for you all. If you had any other things that you noticed in the plan that you felt were off, you know, speak now if you ever hold your peace, otherwise we'll keep it moving. We have a park board meeting next Tuesday as well, so they'll give their recommendation to both bodies for adoption. And then, well, that joint meeting on the 18th. And then we'll have our plans adopted, and we'll do more planning next year on other things, so.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Comments?
I had one comment about it. I thought I did a real nice job on working towards getting master plans for all the parks, spaces. And that seems particularly needed in some areas that haven't been developed yet, particularly Lerner Park, where we don't have a plan and where we've got an active program going there and needing to know how to direct it to make it the most valuable space. That and the detail on bike, bike paths and all around the village and through the village are really good.
Thanks.
Okay. Move on to review and possible recommendation of village board for 2024 downtown master plan request for proposals, RFPs.
All right, so at our last meeting, I brought a memo forward that just kind of asked you, I explained again why we're looking to do the RFP. And Jeff, maybe you can talk of the things. And got a little bit of feedback from you all just on how you'd like to be involved in the process and the scope that you'd like to include and some of the physical boundaries of the downtown area that we'd like to look at. So I used a template we had from a previous proposal, it was more for owners rep services, but changed it for planning services and have reviewed this with our administrator Martin on a couple different occasions. So this is our kind of draft to put in front of you for our request proposals for these master services, master planning services. Page 19 of the packet has a planned schedule for getting this out on the street, have it, you know, open for largely January, and then have interviews. We are imagining that we would have a selection committee of probably a couple of staff, maybe a planning, probably a planning commissioner and one board member. So like to get your thoughts on that. If there's somebody who's interested, we could kind of debate that later. But if you think that's kind of a good makeup that's similar to what we've done on other projects. And then we've got a background about Oregon, about kind of the community at large. The planning area is on Section 6, it's page 21. So I think that's one thing I just wanted to make sure we spend a little bit of time on. We took a look at some of the, wanted to incorporate, like, on the north end, so some of the Gorman properties, some of the other commercial properties that are on kind of that Grove and North Main Street corner. The areas on Market Street, kind of our traditional downtown, and then encompassing the new senior center area. Some of the area on Janzil Street that's shown in our master plan, our comp plan, as central mixed use. And then all the way down to that Elm there.
That's on Washington.
Washington. Yep, thanks. And a couple of the South Main Street properties. So this mostly mimics the central mixed-use area on the comp plan. And obviously, it's not going to be, it doesn't have to be precise, but we wanted to just give the planning firm that would be responding a sense of the area we're talking about. I think it's, it's about 40 acres in total. So we didn't want to have them, you know, feel like, okay, no, we're just talking about one block. It's a couple of blocks that we're talking about here. So I guess just on that point, any kind of feedback on the, the physical scope here of the downtown area? You would suggest?
I like the boundaries, and I was just curious how, if they differ from the 2001 plan.
I haven't put them side by side, but that's a good, good point. Maybe that's something that Jeff could pull up, too.
Is that under your directory?
I think it would be under admin and then downtown plan. I don't have it in my.
Here, 025, nevermind. Keep talking. I'll do some search.
Yeah.
While he's looking at that.
Yep.
Is the, is there a reason why the, sorry, is there a reason why the pool and the school were left out of this boundary?
Yeah, that was one area Martin and I kind of went back and forth on. We actually, the original map I had included, like, Kaiser Park and all the way out to the police station and youth center. And we talked about kind of downing it back. I think, you know, Kaiser Park's on our park plan for needing kind of a, an updated master plan and thinking about how does that function as an event space. I think, you know, with the pool and the school district there, you know, I think other than the splash pad, I'm not sure how many other physical changes that are really going to happen over there. I would be open to including that, you know, area. Especially if we think that, you know, like Kaiser Park is a downtown, you know, is a gathering space for Summer Fest and National Day and other things like that is important to consider.
When I look at these things, I look at them not so much through the lens of what about the next two to five years, but what about the next 20 to 50? And, you know, the pool has got a life expectancy of X, and we're somewhere through that X. So I think that there may be value to including some of those areas in this district. Is it the intention for this to ultimately create an overlay zoning for this area? Is that how that's going to?
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, so there's another, if we go back to the RFP, so there's description of kind of the physical characteristics of the area. But so the project goals would be, so unified vision for downtown, direction for physical expansion. But there's one point about, yeah, maybe having kind of a architectural, you know, design guidelines for downtown.
I think that would be important, because to something Patrick brought up when we were talking about the comprehensive plan, the streetscapes. I think that would be something that would be really important to have in our downtown plan. And something that's come up in the conversation with the project that came up last month with not just building setbacks, but building step backs.
Yep.
Where you can go, I'm picking a number, two stories, but then the third floor has to be stepped back so that it doesn't feel so ominous sometimes. Sort of helps to engage that city feel, make the sidewalk a little bit more approachable, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Those kinds of things. And I think it would also be important to add into there, I don't, as the density increases, I don't think that we want to have drive-through facilities. So I think that we would want to maybe include that as some of the language that, as we move forward. I know that it's not probably for this level, but it's something that.
Keeping in mind.
Yeah, I'm not real palatable for it. It's tough. It's tough.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm just looking at. Okay. Yeah, no, I'm just looking at, I'll go back through the, the project goals, section eight and then section nine too, and just make sure that some of the language about design guidelines is clear or.
And banks, you know, how does the bank drive-through work? Is that a slippery slope?
I don't see a lot of new banks being built down here, but.
No, but in this plan, we have one, don't we?
Right.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, you can go Harris. Yep. Okay, so I guess beyond just the map and I can, Patrick too, I can find the O-one plan. I know Martin had it pulled up earlier. So if y'all had a chance to look through kind of the goals and issues to be addressed, those are kind of the main, you know, scope that we really want to have the planners look at. And then section ten is the sort of product that we're expecting at the end. So inventory of downtown, existing and potential conditions, summary of community-wide downtown-specific attitudes regarding image, role and future of downtown. So that's a little bit of that kind of design guideline language, but I think that could be more clear. Relevant maps, data, development community engagement plan. And then we would have them kind of be the lead role in organizing those events. We talked about maybe, you know, a mobile listening session, kind of those walking focus group type things, you know, maybe doing some, so demonstration projects, maybe it's, hey, let's close down Tringle Park for a weekend and have some events in the parking lot. And what does that feel like? Or maybe we close down a section of, you know, Spring Street or whatever that may be, some of those type of events. Kind of interviews with key, key people and definitely engaging the business owners down here and property owners. And then, yeah, that ten-to-twenty-year vision statement and an implementation plan. So anything in here that hasn't already been mentioned that you feel is missing or, it's, it's a big scope. I think it'll be interesting to see what the prices come back. I, you know, in the CIPA, they ask for twenty thousand. We haven't borrowed those funds yet, so hopefully we'll have kind of a estimate back by, you know, February-ish when we get these back and see if it's still appropriate.
Do you have a sense of how many firms will bid on this?
I don't. I know different, you know, conferences that I've been to and like, most recent state planning conference was in Milwaukee in September and I knew this was kind of on the horizon, so I started sniffing around a little bit. But I think, I mean, it's a small world for planning firms in Wisconsin, but I could definitely see getting at least probably, hopefully at least three or four, if not more. But again, I would expect Vandalwall will probably throw their hat in the ring and, but yeah, we'll post it on the, the APA. Has RFP page, League of Municipalities will have a RFP page as well, obviously on our website too. And we'll probably share it with some of the other, some of the public works, you know, engineering type organizations as well and try to just make sure that we're, we're capturing, you know, maybe some of the other folks we don't normally hear from. But yeah, I would hope to get, if we got five, I'd be excited.
All right.
I, I have one other comment. I really like that you have branding and wayfinding signage in this plan. I think that's something that's sorely needed.
Yeah.
Have you noticed the updated?
Seen the new parking signs? The big blue ones?
Probably need to get wayfinding signs.
To get people to the wayfinding sign.
There's a lot of news that just in the last two months, I think we got.
Yeah, we actually borrowed for that project in twenty twenty. And we had three years, maybe it was even nineteen, because we had three years to spend it. The signs came in last winter and then Public Works had to do some welding and MacGyvering to get them to the poles. But yeah, they're all downtown, kind of around the area of Kaiser Park and Jefferson Crossings and stuff too.
Put that on the next meeting. Just remember that, the map.
Yeah. But yeah, there's more that could be done. I think in that process we realized, oh, maybe we should have, you know, there's areas that are too many signs and it's too confusing and then other areas where there's really no direction. And depending what happens downtown, you know, some of those parking areas and stuff are probably going to shift a little bit. So we'll need an update anyway. But yeah, I think branding is important and having a cohesive feeling that I'm in Oregon and I'm downtown and, you know, what makes it unique. Making sure that's something we can carry forward.
Anybody else? Phil? Nothing? Okay, anything else for new business? Doesn't sound like it does. Okay, Director of Community Development Report. Status of projects.
Development and projects. Just wanted to note for the record, obviously, there was a couple of public comments about the Jamesville Street redevelopment. I think those are just neighbors that are kind of catching themselves up to speed on what was discussed in November. I've not heard from the developers since that meeting, so nothing's been proposed or mailed out or anything like that. So that's as far as I know, you know, they're working on it or it's on pause. But I will forward all the public comment. We've received other letters and emails in the last week. I'll send that over to them. Other project updates we want to share.
We're done with the roads.
Yeah.
Which is really good. Actually, we received some really good feedback from, I mean, it took a long time, but the roads look really good. If you haven't had a chance to drive down, well, some we have, State and Washington, look really, really nice as well, so.
Good.
And.
Yeah.
It's quieting down a little bit for winter.
We're going to be, bring back in next meeting, J.C. Park, just to catch you up on the site plan. The site plans, we've discussed this today, was approved, what, three, two or three years ago? But, you know, there's just tiny little tweaks and we'll be bringing phase two back to.
January.
Or January and that'll be bidding in January as well.
How's the concession stand or what do we have at that?
Concession stands, maybe eighty percent completed.
I haven't walked back there, but okay.
On the, the final stuff on like the concession stand exterior that you'll see will be some branding, but then also some outside painting, which obviously won't occur until March, April. But interior, they'll be finishing up probably in the next month, month and a half.
Good. All right, thanks.
Yeah, it's looking, it's going to be a really nice facility.
Okay, upcoming meetings. We have that joint meeting on the eighteenth at five o'clock. I got to make a note of that.
Yeah, Monday, Monday at five.
I'll show up at six thirty. I'll be here. And then, oh, and the normal ones we have in January and February.
Yep.
And I'll be here. All right. Staff meeting minutes, agendas are done right now, so we have nothing for future. How about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second for someone?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you everybody for coming down.
Thank you.
No, I'll be here. I'll be here.